Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Joy. Any additions, counsel, to the seating's agenda?
Can I give a brief review of Iowa League of Cities budget meeting that Joy, Mike, and I attended last week?
Okay. Counsel, move to our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from the November 28 meeting. Payroll of $130,513.13. And these are new items that you'll see, counsel, on our agendas going forward, and that is separate approval for our reserve debt. This is recommended by state auditors, and that would be for our banker's trust debt of $153,165.31. Approval of our SRF debt, $75,201.25. And approval of liquor licenses for the Eagles. And approval of claims in the amount of $65,580.84. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. There aren't any questions?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Seconded by Thompson. Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to our public appearances, and this evening we have Dan Miller with us, search of County Environmental Health. It is, again, radon month.
Yes. Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come to speak to you about radon, and I want to thank the counsel and the mayor for proclaiming radon action month, which is January for the past eight years. Radon is a colorless, odorless radioactive gas that comes from the natural breakdown of uranium in the soil. Radon is everywhere, and it gets into buildings through cracks and openings and foundations and slabs. When we breathe radon gas in, it can cause cellular damage, which can lead to cancer. Radon is the second-leading cause of lung cancer in the U.S., accounting for 21,000 deaths annually. Iowa has the highest percentage of homes with elevated radon. The good news is it's easy to test for, which is the only way to know if your home has elevated radon level. It's also relatively easy to mitigate. The EPA has set the action level for radon at four picocuries per liter of air and recommends that all homes be tested. Living in a house at four picocuries per liter of air is like smoking eight cigarettes a day. We have had readings as high as 59.2 picoliters per liter in Fairfield. This past January, I handed out 50 radon test kits free of charge. I received 50 results. Thirty-seven percent were high, and several homes were mitigated. For the past 10 years that I've been making free radon test kits available during radon action month, around 50% of the homes tested were at or above the EPA action level. So that means there is a 50% chance that your home has elevated radon, and the only way to know is to test. Several cities and counties in Iowa have radon-resistant new construction policies in place. Licensed daycares must test for radon every two years. Schools have to submit a report about testing or a plan to test to the Department of Education. Fairfield Community Schools have set a three-year schedule for testing their school buildings. I encourage the city of Fairfield and local businesses to test their buildings for radon. The local Kiwanis Club donated funds last year and this year for 50 radon test kits. Free test kits will be made available to people who haven't tested before, starting January 3, between 9:00 and noon at the Jefferson County Environmental Health Department, which is located at the Jefferson County Highway Department, 901 North 8th Street. There will be public service announcements coming out soon, and a display board will be in the library during January. The American Lung Association and the EPA teamed up with three federal agencies and eight national organizations to form the Federal Radon Action Plan with the goal to prevent 3,200 lung cancer deaths annually by 2020 through radon reduction strategies. We all want to create a healthier community, which is evident by our Healthiest State Initiative, Blue Zones Project, and many other projects. Reducing radon is a simple prevention that will improve the overall health of our community. That is why I'm asking the mayor and city council to once again proclaim January as radon action month. People can get more information on radon at our website, which is JeffersonCountyIowa.com, and click on Environmental Health and scroll down to radon. If anybody has any questions, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Dan, thank you very much. I really, I think, appreciate the work that you're doing on behalf of the community in educating and also providing the resources for people to test. And I think over the last eight years, you've probably contributed a lot to the public health of the community based on the programs that you have, so we really do appreciate that. As far as our city buildings, I'm trying to think where we might have any basement-ish...
We have one here, Mayor.
Yeah, that's what we do. So, I guess we need to test. Bring over one of those kits so we can be sure if they're okay. And you will let everyone know how we're doing, as an example. So, counsel, I do have a signed proclamation here. Entertain a motion to approve and endorse the proclamation declaring radon action month for January 2017.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Seconded by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, Dan. Next, I'd like to invite Kay Adam to address, counsel. Kay? Kay, what is your address? We didn't have it on your form.
East Fillmore.
East Fillmore, so that's the area we're talking about?
Right.
Great, thank you.
Okay, there's a little problem. It has been trucks, but they're setting a very bad example because there's now cars that are driving. Is there a speed limit on Fillmore? City street?
Yes, all the city streets are 25 miles an hour unless posted differently.
Well, the trucks are going through there. I'd hate to think of what they're traveling, the speed they're traveling, and we have cars now doing the same thing, but we had ideal gravel. Derrish has been hauling rock and gravel, and it's all been derrish and wind and you name it, four or five different truckers trucking out and constructing. Anyway, they go, the latest is the trucks that are coming with two trailers hooked behind a truck, which makes a very long vehicle, and they are packing out trees. And again, I would think there would be a city limit as well as a speed limit, and this is, it just got unreal. And this was the first weekend, and there wasn't any activity on Saturday or Sunday, but it has been seven days a week. Where are the trees coming from, and why are we cutting them down?
I don't know that I can answer. Mike, anything, any activity that we're...
Sounds like the sewer project. I can speak to the gravel, Mayor.
Right.
And there will be a substantial amount of rock associated with our Step 1 project, and that is one of the access points. They are using Fillmore to haul gravel in for that project. In terms of the trees, most of the clearing and grubbing was done prior to the project, so I'm not familiar where the trees are unless our engineer has some other...
This has just been in the last three, four months. They are big trees.
Three, four months?
They are loaded.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yes, well, those would then be related to the project.
And they travel past me on East Fillmore, way out to the end of Fillmore West.
Okay. Well, chief, I see you taking notes.
Yes, sir. We can put in a request for extra radar patrol in the area and see if there's an issue with the speed limit, ma'am.
What about the load limit?
We would check, it has to be posted on that roadway. I don't believe there's a weight limit there, but I definitely will double-check for you.
Okay, so, last week, there was a truck, two trucks, actually came in, and they had huge drainage pipes, you know. Is that the pipeline, or is that the sewer?
I think this young lady behind you can give you an answer.
I can answer that. Some of those trucks are related to the Step 1 sewer project. We do have a progress meeting tomorrow, and I've heard this concern from a few other neighbors, and I intend to address it with the contractor tomorrow. As Mike said, it is an access point for the project, but we will remind them of the speeds. I've also heard some neighbors commenting about them not stopping completely or not yielding, and so that was, it will be addressed with the contractor tomorrow during our progress meeting.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Okay, so then, what about the trucks? They're still running today.
And what's the complaint, ma'am? I'm sorry.
What?
What's the complaint, ma'am, that they're leaving the private property and not yielding, or what was your complaint?
That's right. They are roaring by.
Well, I think the two things. One is Melanie will bring that to the attention of the contractor, and then the chief, the chief will also establish radar to see if we can help control the speed. And you're absolutely right. I think we've all noticed that, that when there is a construction project where large trucks are looping back and forth to either pick up another load and dump another load, that sort of thing, they're hurrying to get from point A to point B. So we should definitely take a look at that. We do appreciate you bringing it to our attention. And then, please, let the chief know, or let us know here at City Hall if they're paying attention. Thank you very much. Next, counsel, we'll move to our resolutions and action items. And first, we'll have a presentation on interim financing proposals, and Travis Squires is here for that presentation this evening. Good evening, Travis.
Good evening. You should have a packet of information in front of you, the old-fashioned version of burnt-off trees that are killed. Thanks for having me. Tonight, we are reviewing with you interim financing proposals that were received for the sewer treatment plant project. The proposals, as they went out, were designed to establish what we call a drawdown loan for the city on this interim financing. What that would mean is that after receiving an award and bids in for the construction, you would close a financing with a financial institution, and then the terms would be that as the city would need the funds, they would then draw them, and then you would pay interest on the drawn balance, as opposed to going out and selling a bond issue and paying on the entire amount that's outstanding. You'd only be paying on the amount that you had drawn.
And Travis, would you remind the counsel again why we need an interim financing package to begin with, which has to do with our USDA rules?
Yep. So the USDA is, will be providing the final financing for the project. That is, I believe, 1.65% over a 40-year period, so there's federal dollars in there that are subsidizing your overall interest rate. The one thing they do not provide is an interim financing mechanism, as opposed to some other financial methods that are, or financing methods that are available. So the task is, and this is a daunting task, that you have to get an investor to commit to an interest rate for a project that has yet to be bid, and you do not yet have a timeline for closing. Right now, it's anticipated we've got proposals for a closing that would be mid-April, which would be very early. But in order to, on the USDA project timeline, to go out to actually bid the project, you have to have a letter of commitment that you can receive interim financing. So that's why this is way early. I mean, you haven't even designed the project. So obviously, if something goes awry with the USDA financing or the project, or gets delayed or pushed off, then this does as well. So what you're doing tonight is giving authorization to move forward with getting that documentation in place, and I guess kind of following the red-letter tape to get the process moving. So this would allow you to move forward then on your meeting on the 15th with getting bids out on the project. So what we received, we received a couple different proposals. Before we get there, I did put in a couple of slides that would be reviewed from the last time we met, really just talking about what you have for overview of financing, your outstanding debt, your covenants that you have in Section 1. You do have a two-different series of long-term debt outstanding related to a SRF project in 2011 and '12. You have your bond anticipation note with Midwest One Bank for your Phase 1 or Step 1 project, and so that was the same type of financing. Again, that'll be taken out with a USDA, not SSA loan, about $160,000 annually when that becomes long-term debt. Regarding your operating budget for the current fiscal year, 17 budgeted for revenues of about $2.85 million. You had operating expenditures around $1.5 million. As far as if you were to look at revenues available to pay debt, it's about $1.5 million. So what you have in place now will get you almost there. You do have a couple minor rate increases that we've talked about. One of the reasons for going with the USDA route was to look at having a kind of a smaller step-up in rate to begin with. So that would be, will be implemented as course of your normal course of business. So ultimately, the city has done a great job of setting yourself up where you're not building a new plant and slapping on a 50% increase on the same day. You've been prudent about building up cash balances as well and to be able to take on the financing. So all those steps have been good, they've been in place. So tonight, what is being asked of you is to give a motion to move forward with negotiating final documentation on one of the proposals. So when you get to the, I don't know, Section 3, where we have a comparison of financing options, there's a bunch of background data behind this that we don't need to go into detail on every little thing, just know that Mike and Tom and I met before in order to kind of review this in a little bit more detail. But in general, as you stand today, you have two separate options in front of you. One came from Cobank, and the second came from Great Western Bank. Cobank is a firm out of Greenwood Village, Colorado. They've done a lot of USDA financings, interim financings. Great Western Bank is a bank that has a strong presence in Iowa. The difference between those proposals are one offered a variable rate, that would be Cobank. Their variable rate, as it stands today, is based on a rate index. It's called the one-month LIBOR rate. It's currently at 0.62%, and their rate is 1.2% above that, so the current rate of The fixed rate from Great Western was at 3.23%. So you can see that there's a cost for locking in a fixed rate in this current rate environment. And the reason that the fixed rate is more difficult on a drawdown loan is because the investors do not know when you're taking the money. So they're not able to do any sort of hedging or anything on their own balance sheet. They're taking a lot of risk. So while they have a draw schedule, you're not committed to taking the draws along the schedule that was originally given to them. So that's why you see that differential. There's also listed an Option 1, which says ban plus investment, and what that means is you would take out a bond anticipation note, and we talked about the drawdown structure. This would be not a drawdown structure, so you would pay a rate around 2.25%, but you'd be paying that for the entirety that the bond is outstanding. The trade-off is, is that you don't need to spend $24.9 million on day one, so you can turn around and invest that money. Conservatively, I just showed you the one-month treasury rate, which is currently 0.34% as kind of the comparison under what I'm calling Part 1 analysis. I list this as hypothetical because while Piper Jaffray would be willing to consider writing a letter of commitment, that's currently not what is being offered up. We're looking at the other options. There's a couple preference issues and procedures that, why that isn't an option, but that could be an option down the road, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that would mean. So ultimately, what we're trying to get at is what's the cost? Overall, what's it going to cost? And at these current rates in that Part 1 analysis, you see the five columns to the right walk you across, your estimated interest cost, investment and income, which is only present in Option 1 because the other ones are drawdowns. You don't have money sitting in the bank to invest. Origination fees, something with the Great Western Bank proposal is that they required a half percent, a half percent origination fee with their loan. Not saying that that's steep, but it wouldn't be maybe typical to be quite that high with other proposals. You see that Cobank did not have that in their proposal. So in comparing apples to apples, we feel it's prudent to add that in, in the overall net cost. So when you factor these out, you see that the net cost on Cobank ends up being 1.2%. That's because you're not, you're only paying interest on the amount you're drawing. So your comparison is that, well, if you were to take it all at once and get a rate upfront, the equivalent would be 1.2%. But there's a wild card there. It's a variable rate.
Right.
That's not something that the city should take lightly, which is why we stepped down and looked at the Part 2 analysis, which I'll get over, or go through in just a moment. The Great Western Bank, again, it's fixed, it's drawdown. Whether or not rates go up or go down, you know what your cost is going to be on that scenario. Now, the thing I'll add on both of these scenarios is that all of these net interest costs probably have you paying interest about eight months longer than you actually would, just because the way we set it up, we don't know what the exact timeframe is going to be, and you don't want to be sitting there only having maturity in September of 2018, and then your project spills over into January, February of the following year. So that's kind of how we set that up. It's not to say that you'll actually pay that amount, because both of these scenarios would allow you to pay it off as soon as you get the final USDA financing go ahead. So it's likely you could be cutting in the neighborhood of $400,000, $500,000 of interest cost, just if you had your normal time. But on paper, if you were to hold it out to the maturity date of June 1 of 2020, that would be what it would look like. So moving through the analysis, the Part 2 is looking at, excuse me if I get a little technical here, we're trying to look at different options on how rates, if they were to go up, how that would impact your overall cost of financing. So we're looking at the Cobank proposal in this case, and what you see is changes in rates now, and you can see we've assumed on the first three of those scenarios that rates would go up by 1.5%. So LIBOR 30, which is currently at 0.62, would go up to 2.12%. Now, the difference between those scenarios is the timing. On that first scenario, 2A, I assume that rates went up a quarter percent every six months. On 2B, it was a quarter percent every four months. On C, it was a quarter percent every two months. So you can see that the rates going up more quickly would obviously have a negative effect on your overall expense on the transaction. The thing you'll note, on all three of those scenarios, you end up with a lower total cost than the Great Western Bank proposal. When you get to 2D, I have added three more quarter percent rate jumps and assume that they occurred every other month. So that puts you at the current rate on LIBOR 30 to be 2.87%. LIBOR 30, historically, is, just to give you, it's an interbank borrowing rate. It's a 30-day rate. The last time it was over, well, right now, looking at the highest it's been in a year. The lowest it's been in a year is about 0.2%. You would have to go back to 2007 and '08 to find a time that it was even above 1.5%. So it's not to say it can't happen, it's just, you know, it's one of those things that you're going to have to decide that, you know, would you want to spend $850,000 to enter into a fixed rate now above the other? Now, again, that's, you know, you can assume there's probably some rate movement. The thing I can tell you right now is that you've probably heard in the news that the Fed's thinking about moving rates this week. Well, everybody in the market right now is already pricing that probability, and so I would view the likelihood of that creating an event that raised rates to be pretty slim. It's not to say it can't, but that would be the analysis that I would be looking at. So under that scenario, you do end up in a situation where you would end up paying slightly higher rate. Now, I'm going to circle back to Option 1, because Option 1 is one where you can eliminate your interest rate risk, and you can really do that at any time. I mean, you could also go out and say, well, we want to refund this Cobank proposal, assuming you were to approve it and move forward, and then by next summer, you're saying, rates are really starting to rise, I'm getting nervous about this, I want to be in a fixed-rate proposal. You would certainly have the option to do that because these are callable at any time. There's no penalty for doing it, because if you're on the bank's standpoint, all's they're doing is taking the draw you took that month and then making sure that that works on their balance sheet and reinvesting on their end. So that's why they've tied to a 30-day rate. So there's not any penalty for doing that. So you could look at entering into that ban plus that investment and kind of hedging your risk. It's just not something that you would be able to enter in at this time based on the USDA procedure and process. So we do offer that up as kind of an option down the road, something you can evaluate as you get closer to closing. Now, I don't think that you would probably only earn 0.34%, I think that would be the most conservative, because ultimately, if you were to have this offer and we were to say, well, we can fund this today, Piper, you can underwrite a bond anticipation note, I think that rate's probably less than 2.25. I also think that you could look at setting up a ladder of investments that could earn around 1%, which would be that bottom scenario, which actually creates a scenario that's less than 1.5 million total cost. The issue you have, if you do proceed and want to do that, you are probably going to look at some cost, but the goal we're looking at is not leaving you without an ability to enter into a fixed rate, which I think is your downside risk. You know, if LIBOR 30 goes crazy and you've got 4.5% LIBOR rates, you're going to want to try to get into a fixed rate so you can eliminate that exposure. Because at that point, if short-term rates have gone up that much, you're likely going to be able to get it on the investment side as well, so that you might borrow at 3 at that time and be able to reinvest at 2. So you'd be in a better situation. There's a lot of data and numbers to back all these things up. I provided that for you. My intention was to not go into every last detail. I know that I went through that with Mike and Tom before the meeting, but certainly, I don't want you to feel pressured to move forward without getting more explanation on any of the scenarios. So if you have questions, let's handle them now. Just know that the next step would be if you approve moving forward with one of the proposals, that we would then work to get a commitment letter from them in a form acceptable for the USDA in order to start your bid process. So we hope to secure that by the end of the week. I'm told that Cobank is familiar with their process and procedure and what they need... need, so hopefully that's streamlined, but I'm not saying it, there could be hiccups, but I'm hopeful crossing my fingers that there are not. So I guess, any questions, council mayor?
Thank you, Travis. So council, you know, your decision is going to be based on going with the fixed rate or the variable rate. I think Travis has done a decent job of explaining, along with all the technicalities, how that LIBOR rate is something that can fluctuate, although its history is that it's fairly stable, wouldn't anticipate something rising too, too high, especially during a short period of time. But decision for you to consider would be which one of these proposals to endorse and move forward, and see if we can get that lined up with our USDA financing. Any questions, council? Tom, any recommendations from your side, having gone, been through the...
When we talked there today, again, the, well, being honest, the option that we, that we thought maybe was the best initially is this number two, the variable Cobank one on the drawdown, and primarily because it gives us some flexibility, just as Travis said. And that's the, I don't buy you, I hate to get backed into a corner. And in this case, we, if for some reason rates do go up unexpectedly, we do have an out to be able to go more towards the fixed rate. But on the, on right now, if things stay as they are, this is by far the cheapest alternative.
Right. And the investment opportunities are interesting, too, but again, it's such a short-term borrow that I don't anticipate we'd even get that far along, but it's there if we need it. Yeah.
I also appreciate, within the Cobank, there's no origination fee, and there's no penalty to switch, so there's no reason not to try the lower rate, and then if it goes up, we have options.
Yeah. That's the thing, they leave us with a lot of options if things change.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Okay. Then by resolution, our support for one of the proposals, Travis, is what we are looking for from, from us this evening?
Yep. And this is just a motion to keep moving on the documentation. The actual resolutions for approval will come later. Again, I'm hopeful that we're not coming back saying, oh, there's a hiccup, but these USDA ones do have a...
Sure.
A few things that, we've got to make sure we get everything, i's dotted, t's crossed. We had some work like that with Midwest One on the last one, but they were very agreeable and worked through it.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm just hopeful that there's not any more delays. I'll be on the phone with them in the morning if that's the route.
So then, council, a motion to continue moving forward on short-term financing agreement with Cobank, that would be representing the variable rate option.
Make that motion.
Moved by Thompson?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much, Travis. We appreciate your time tonight and your presentation.
All right. Let me know if you have any other questions, and hopefully it'll be all good news later this week.
And if we don't see you before the end of the month, happy holidays to you and your family. Council, next we'll move to consideration of engagement of bond counsel, and I'll ask Joy to tell us what we are entering into with Alors Cooney.
And this is a, just another example of what Travis said, doctor, i's and crush your t's. This is a letter of engagement with Alors and Cooney for the borrow of the 25 million. This was in the packet that you'd already approved, I think, two weeks ago, and I just kind of overlooked it. So this is just a, a letter outlining what they will do to help us through the process of, with the 25 million sewer revenue capital loan notes. It's the services that they will provide.
Right. Thank you, Joy. And this is pretty typical for us to separately approve bond counsel for these types of financial transactions, so would entertain a motion to approve the letter of engagement with Alors Cooney.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, council, we have a resolution considering ordering construction of a sanitary sewer conveyance improvement, step one, and we are actually setting a public hearing by resolution as required. So we would be setting that public hearing for our next meeting on December 15. Melanie, is there anything else that council needs to know about this, other than setting the public hearing?
Mike?
I can jump in here.
Sure.
So you're absolutely correct, Mayor. This is the resolution fixing that date, and it also orders city staff and city engineer to take additional steps in terms of advertising the project for bid. Because of the tight timeframe here, we have to move quickly with the bid process. Originally, we're going to move through with change order, but all of us felt that probably the bid process is the, the best and most fair way to move through here. So this will allow us to advertise for bid and move this process along. If all goes according to plan, we'll open bids at 9:00 AM on the 15th, and council will consider them at noon on the 15th at their, at their meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
And normally, I go over the details of the project at the public hearing, but given the tight timeframe, I'll go over just a few things on this. The work that's being bid is the sewer, basically through the golf course. It goes where step one left off, across over to Lamson, then back across to Fillmore, up through the country club, and stops at D Street. Since the parcel hasn't been secured beyond D Street, right at this point, the, the bid process is just to D Street. So we're looking at 300 feet of 48-inch and 3,341 feet of 36-inch pipe. There's 13 manholes on this project, and the engineer's estimate of construction is $1.68 million.
Right. And the proposed timeline for this project also?
It would be to have all of the ground disturbing activity done by March 31st. So the contractor's still maybe doing testing of the sewer at that time, but the, the intent is to have the sewer in, backfilled, and the ground ready for the country club to do their own restoration by March 31st.
Okay. Thank you. And that's also part of the reason why we're trying to keep this timeline going, to comply with the major work that's going to be done out there.
Yes.
We appreciate that. Any questions for Melanie, council? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion then to set the public hearing by resolution for December 15th.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Hallie. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. This, council, we have a public hearing that will open at this time, and this is on scheduled assessment for the sidewalk reconstruction that was done at 104 North Court Street. The owner requested that there, that this be, the funds be utilized out of our sidewalk repair reserve, and then assessed over a 10-year period of time. So we'll ask at this time if there's anyone who wishes to speak to the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. The resolution, council, then, would be to approve the final schedule for the repayment of those funds. So entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Okay. Moved by Rasmussen?
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next, council, we have a reconstruction project on Sixth Street that we would like to approve as final. Melanie?
Yes. So this is Sixth Street pavement, or reconstruction, from Grimes to Depot, as well as some work on, on Depot. The total cost of the project was $115,540.78. It was about $7,000 under budget, or under the contract amount and under budget, due to the patch on Grimes Street not being as big as we thought, and then several other miscellaneous items. Probably the largest cost saver was the, cost and time saver was the wonderful fall weather we had, and the contractor seeded well into November, or maybe into November, but the warm weather allowed it to grow, and so there wasn't any temporary seeding, and the city only paid for seeding once. So Mike and I and Daryl have reviewed the project, and we would recommend accepting the project, and that would therefore start the four-year guarantee secured by the performance bond.
Okay. Thank you, Mel. Council, entertain a motion then to accept the project as final?
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mel. Appreciate it. Next, council, we have a requirement to set a public hearing to review the expenditures associated with the downtown facade project. Mike, would you explain to council why we are taking this step this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Brad with Area 15 has informed us there's a new provision required by state law for CDBG fund expenditures, and that's essentially that we hold a public hearing as we approach 50% expenditure level within a given program, just to sort of take in public comment on the overall status of the project. So he's asking that the council set a public hearing for December 15th. We're currently around 40%, and he's thinking by the time we get to December 15th, the progress will put us around that 50% mark. So he simply asks that we set a public hearing and hold it on the 15th.
Okay. Thank you. So entertain a motion to set the public hearing for December 15th for the review of the facade project.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thanks. Next, council, we have consideration of a policy personnel revision, and I'll turn to Councilman Hallie from Personnel Committee to give us a report on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, Personnel Committee met, took us about two hours to get through this 66-page document. A little background, why did we do this? Why did, why did Mike and Joy work so hard on this? The real motivation was to bring our personnel policy into compliance with new state and federal law. That was the first and most important reason. Secondarily, just to update certain aspects of it, things like cell phone use, social media, things that are more modern that, that may not have been in there before, but also to equalize and create an equitable pay structure for overtime. That was a big thing, that in the past, the different city departments paid their employees differently for overtime. So Mike, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but employees in certain departments, if they worked an eight-hour day on a holiday, they got paid eight hours for working a holiday, plus the standard eight hours of work they did, and then they get double pay, so they get an additional eight hours. So it was 24 hours of pay for eight hours of work.
That's correct, council member.
Other city employees, working the same day, for the same hours, got paid time and a half, and that's it. They did not get paid for the holiday. Is that correct, some of them?
That is correct. They got paid double time, but they did not get paid for the holiday.
Okay, so they got double times.
Yep.
So they're getting 16 hours, so quite a big gap. You've got a two-thirds situation there. So in, in the spirit of all employees of the city being paid the same, an attempt was made to balance that. Now, obviously, it would be wonderful if the city had the funds to raise everybody to the higher pay. Alas, we do not. And so each department gave a little and got a little in this, in this new policy. So some who were getting the, essentially, the double time plus the holiday pay, saw there a reduction of about 17%, so they're about 83% what they used to be with this new policy, but generously, they get another paid holiday. There used to be nine, now there'll be 10 in this policy of paid holidays. We had President's Day in February as a paid day off, and also granted all full-time employees two additional personal days per year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm on the right track here.
Yeah.
So it was a very interesting discussion. We had most of our department heads present at the meeting, also had some employees of the departments who were taking a hit in some of their, their overtime pay, and it was great just to hear the various department heads talking about what they may gain, what they may lose, but to see the whole big picture that we're all in this together, we all work for the same people, we all work for the taxpayers, it's got to be fair, it's got to be equitable. And Mike shared an email from an employee who is in the group, who's taking a hit under this, but employee expressed understanding after attending the meeting and hearing from departments like our, our public safety departments, our police and our fire, who have to go do jobs anytime they're needed. And, and that's really, if you work for a department that provides an essential service, that's, that goes with the territory. You have to go out. We had water pipe break on, two, two breaks on Thanksgiving, and so we have employees out there working, and no one likes that to happen, but it is part of, part of what happens. So we want to pay them accordingly, we want them to feel appreciated, but at the same time, we want to create something, something equitable, and so that's what this policy accomplishes. And now I'll open the floor to the hard-working Mike and Joy. Anything else? Darren was there. Any of our department heads would like to add anything?
Mayor, I think, very well said, Councilmember Hallie. It has been, there are a number of things from, some departments allow for comp time, others don't. Other leave balances are tracked at the department level and not at City Hall, and as we found in our audit, that's not acceptable. There are just a number of things throughout the city that weren't the same. It was almost sort of stovepipe operations. And so what this policy does is bring everybody together, everybody's on the same page, we all have one set of standard operating procedures. So I think, I think Michael said it absolutely correct, there are gives and there are takes in this policy, but overall, we feel we have something that is equitable and palatable to most of our employees.
And just to review, it was vetted by all the departments. They were, department heads were given this as a draft, taken back to their employees. It was, it's been a multi-month process. This is nothing new. This is, and, and there was a subcommittee that looked at it. So all the city employees have had a chance to review this. This isn't, this isn't us pushing this on them. There's been a conversation that's evolved into this policy.
Okay. Thank you for the report. Council, any questions? Yes.
At tonight's library board meeting, the Board of Trustees agreed to adopt the City of Fairfield Employee Handbook as it's revised, with a few provisions that reflect things that are unique about the library, but very much in line with what we're trying to do. So assuming this is adopted by the full council, we will add this small chapter, and we're calling it the Library Addendum to the handbook.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
And each department does have the right to have their own operating procedure, and the library is a little different because of their, their autonomy with their own board. But yeah, this is, this is good for all our departments. I'm glad to hear that the board adopted it as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Then I entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the revisions of the personnel policy.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next, council, we have consideration for the installation of two yield signs. I'm going to turn this over to Katie.
The first one came to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee as a request for a yield sign at the intersection of Fillmore and Maple, so where Maple kind of goes back into some streets behind Fillmore, south of Fillmore, there is a, is currently an intersection that is not signed. And so in discussion, we felt like the transport, or the traffic flow over there justified a yield sign, and we are making a request for a yield sign be placed for northbound traffic on Maple, at the intersection of Maple and Fillmore.
Okay. Thank you. Then I'll take that as a motion to approve the yield sign.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Anderson. Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay. Thank you. Next, Katie?
Second request comes from a business that is located...
Second request comes from a business that is located on Jackson and is having some traffic flow issues, not necessarily, not necessarily an issue yet, but perceived issues. Again, an unsigned corner at Jackson and 20th, which is out by the Compost site.
Right.
So again, we assessed it, we worked with Chief Thomas, determined which was the road that maintained the most traffic, and the request is for the installation of a yield sign at 20th and Jackson to curb the flow on 20th.
North. So coming out. Is that...
It's southbound.
Southbound.
No. It would be southbound to westbound.
Okay.
Coming north is...
To westbound, right. Yes, 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 yes. Okay. Got it.
There would be a yield sign there, and then there was another sign that was going to be placed.
That's on private property, so not for the council.
Okay.
Okay. But from my information, there will be a sign placed on the private property as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's on the compost site, and that'll fall within Darrell's responsibilities. You hear that?
Great. Thank you. So then, accept that as a motion to approve the yield sign at 20th and Jackson.
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, Councils, as we discussed at our last meeting, is recommended by the Property Committee to withdraw the current ordinance that we are considering for outdoor dining, and then they will make some revisions to the original and bring those back. So we will take the step this evening to withdraw ordinance 1144 for outdoor dining. As it exists now, was in the process, where we were at the second reading, so we're going to withdraw that, and then it will come back probably up to the first of the year with some new revisions.
In the committee meeting reports down at the end of this meeting, there's for Personnel also, and in that is a link to minutes that I had created with some wording options for us to look at in other sections that need to be revised and added to what is currently proposed to be revised. And that's why there is a withdrawal on this.
Okay. All right. Very good. So would you make a motion to...
I would move that we withdraw ordinance number 1144 from the second reading to not being before the council.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Hallie. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, Council, then, we will have the final, third and final reading of our ordinance 1146, which are lodging house, short-term rental regulations, reading, and we had some extensive conversation about this at our last meeting. Those revisions that were approved have been made to the ordinance, so you are approving the final revised ordinance. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it up at this time if there's anyone who would like to speak to the ordinance. Now, we'll close the public hearing and ask what is the wish of the Council.
I would like to move this from the third through the final reading.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton to move the third, from the, to the final reading. Second by Hallie. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I know we don't have any members of our ad hoc committee here from the public, other than Martha, but I want to thank them all for the work that they did, and I will send them all a letter, getting a lot of good feedback from the community, doing a lot of great research on this and bringing it for our approval. So I think it will be better served to have something like this in place. So thank you again. We'll move down to our committee reports. Darren, for Personnel.
Again, this is minutes that were attached to this agenda that I had reported on previously, discussing the meeting that we had on November 16th. In the outdoor dining ordinance itself, there is Section 9.50.020, general outdoor dining requirements. The following general requirements shall apply to each of the three outdoor dining options established and regulated. C, letter C, outdoor dining areas must remain clear of food litter, clear of litter, food scraps, and soiled dishes at all times. A person from the public, Betsy Howland, came in and wanted to have that language softened. I am proposing that that be replaced, that we replace the word "must" with "shall," and replace the words "at all times" with "as to not create a nuisance." So if you read that line again, it would be outdoor dining areas shall remain clear of litter, food scraps, and soiled dishes at all times, or excuse me, dishes, and at all times with, excuse me, as not to create a nuisance, removing the words "at all times" and replacing them with "as not to create a nuisance." And then, letter G, alcoholic beverages to be served outdoor dining areas shall be prepared within the restaurant and shall not be served prior to 5:00 PM. Proposed wording change to G would be replaced 5:00 PM to, with 11:00 AM. And those were the two additional items that we would like to put on with an ordinance, including what was proposed with ordinance 1144.
Okay. Great. I think those will be easily adoptable and acceptable, so we'll look forward to those.
Okay.
Thank you. And Michael, do you have anything to add to your personnel?
We covered it.
Okay. So you can go ahead with your report.
Yeah. So briefly, Mike, Joy and I attended an Iowa League of Cities budget workshop. They do these annually. The first part of it is just going over new rules and regulations that clerks and administrators and such should be aware of. In the afternoon, it got a little bit more conversational, and we heard the gentleman from the League of Cities discussing best practices in terms of financial policy, and every single example that he asked the group, do you do this? Do you do this? We do. And so it's just very validating, knowing that Mike and Joy had really listened when they took the recommendations of the state auditor and all the things that have happened since then, all the policy that we've put in place, the extra reporting we have on our agendas, that it's all the best practices that are out there and that we are following them and really leading the way. I don't think any other city was on track the same way we were, that was there and that spoke up. And even things like, a lot of the cities are facing wastewater infrastructure, water infrastructure, and they're wondering, how do you raise rates in a way that's palatable? And I brought up, well, we worked with a third-party organization that put us on a schedule that seems to, the schedule coincides with the improvements you're making, so you're never raising rates just to raise them, there's a reason to raise them, and it's done in steps that makes it easier for the public. So just reinforces that we're on the right track and that we're following these best practices, and just wanted to give some credit to Mike and Joy for the good work they do.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your report, and we do appreciate that. I think we do feel very good about the state of our policies regarding finances and how they are governed, so we really appreciate that reinforcement. There's no other business for the Council. Entertain a motion to, or Mike, sorry, did you...
That's okay. Just one quick item to name here. I'd like to recognize, Michael, how is very gracious in giving Joy and I recognition on policy. There was a committee, Scott Vaughn was on that committee, as well as Sean Worley, that spent hours and hours and hours and hours and hours reviewing best practices from other communities, as well as the leadership team who also spent quite a bit of time reviewing that. So just wanted to say thank you, it was a team effort, and I'm glad that we got it accomplished.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate it again.